All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the meeting of the Cloverdale City Council. I will call a meeting to order at six o'clock. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Can we get a roll call, please, Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Okay. Conflict of interest declarations. I'll run through them real quick. Under G2, the lighting and landscape district, because we live in certain areas, under Attachment 1A, Zone 1, Vice Mayor Walter will have to recuse himself. Under Attachment 1B, which is Zone 2, I will have to recuse myself. And under 1C, Zone 3, Councilmember Wheeler will have to recuse himself. Other conflicts of interests or anything else? Any changes or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, no changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Do you have anyone in our audience that would like to make a public comment? If so, please come forward to the stand.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Brad Horrell. I live on Pepperwood Drive in Cloverdale. I am the USA Pickleball Association Ambassador for Cloverdale, and I'm also the President of the Cloverdale Pickleball Club. I'm here to thank you for the two new pickleball courts we have at Ferber Park. And our newly formed club already has forty members. We've been enjoying playing on the courts since they were finished in September. If you weren't already aware, I want you to know how much these courts get used, not only by our club but by the citizens of Cloverdale. I live on Pepperwood Drive, and whenever I leave or come home, at the corner of Pepperwood and Foothill, I can see the courts. And more often than not, people are out on those courts playing. Our club has open play days on Wednesdays and Saturdays. We've been having twelve to eighteen people come out on those mornings. This morning, we had eighteen people, and we had several of our regulars who were not present. While eight people were playing, ten people were waiting this morning. This past Sunday morning, I walked my dog through the park, about ten thirty. Both courts were in use. There was the picnic table right next to the courts. Four women were sitting there waiting to play, and as I passed them, two more people walked up with paddles, waiting to play. The courts really get used. I'm also pleased to see that the courts are being used a lot by families, especially on the weekends when I walk by. I'll see moms and dads out with kids, little kids, big kids, kids who can't reach the net with their paddle are still out there taking a swing at it. That's one of the great things about pickleball, is anybody can play within a very short period of time. So the courts are used a lot by a large number of Cloverdavens, and we'd like to see two more courts put in in Ferber Park. We could move that swing set down to where the unused horseshoe pits are, and there'd be plenty of room to put two more courts in there. I would be willing to work again with the Public Works Subcommittee to start planning this. Again, thank you for the courts we now have, and I hope you will plan for a couple more courts soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clarifying question before you go. Have you been in contact with the school district in the past for more courts through them? Because without going into full detail, I know that was something that recently came up about a month ago, and they were working, said they were going to work with you to get more.
I have, and I have an upcoming meeting with Steve Jorgensen.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Anyone? There you go.
Good evening, City Council. I think most of you know me, and my name is Jamie King. I'm one of the owners of Red Door Remedies Cannabis Dispensary at the south end of town. And I'm here tonight to ask if, we've asked a few times in the past, but this time I come with a robust, we would really, really like to form a cannabis business owners Subcommittee Meeting in conjunction with the city. The last couple of years have been a little bumpy. They've been a little rough. It's been a huge learning curve. I would say anyone that knows us knows the business, that it's been more than a little bumpy. We've had opportunities to attend these types of meetings in the East Bay, Fremont, San Jose, Santa Rosa most recently. It was really informative. Santa Rosa is hugely informative to find out the disconnect between their city council, their police department, fire department, and those cannabis businesses. It makes me extremely, extremely grateful to live where I do and have the relationships that we do. You guys have been incredible partners to us, absolutely incredible. I just think this would be a huge help. I think anything else coming down the line in the future could be kind of cut off by bringing those folks to the table and kind of discussing all together in the same room. Look, this is kind of what our plan is, and maybe it's not appropriate to do a monthly thing, but at least a quarterly, so we could get those folks in the room at least three or four times a year and ask, what are you planning on doing? How are you planning on, like, what's coming down the line? Whether it's a change in tax, whether it's a change in what's going on in our ordinance, just some kind of communication where we can kind of nip some of these problems in the bud going forward, and it doesn't have to turn into some kind of giant disaster going forward. Thank you for your time, we really appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Maybe we can bring that up during future agenda items and discuss.
Mayor, members of council, if I can, just real quickly, you can certainly discuss it later, you know, since Mrs. King is present. One of my recommendations would be for council to consider forming an ad hoc committee rather than assigning it formally to one of your council subcommittees. We have really pretty busy agendas in the Subcommittee, and I think the workshop format with an ad hoc might work a little, be a little more conducive to the discussion with the cannabis business group. So just something for your consideration. Of course, we can, we can talk about this later under the agenda, but I just wanted to make that comment while Ms. King was in the audience.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience with any public comments, items not on the open session agenda? Seeing none? Is there anyone in the virtual audience that has a hand raised? Thank you, everyone. I appreciate you guys being here.
Thank you, Mayor. No one's raising their hand online at this time.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. C Communications. Any written communications or anything? David?
No general communications, Mayor. There were some communications received after the agenda was published, and those are included under those particular agenda items. We could talk to those items when they come up.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Proclamations. D1, Proclamation for National Library Week. Councilmember Morganstern would like to read this proclamation.
A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale proclaiming April 23 to 29, 2023 National Library Week in Cloverdale. Whereas libraries such as the Sonoma County Library provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life, and whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status, and whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all, and whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships, and whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs, and whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civil engagement, and shared community goals, whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all, whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week, and whereas 2023 is April 23 to 29, the 2023 theme for National Library Week this year is "There's More to the Story," illustrating the fact that in addition to the books in library collections, libraries offer so much more. Whereas right here at our Cloverdale Branch Library, our incredible library staff offers all kinds of programming in addition to books and other traditional library offerings, including public computers and technologies such as 3D printing. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Cloverdale Mayor and City Council proclaim National Library Week April 23 to 29, 2023 in Cloverdale. Be it further resolved that during the week, the city council encourages all residents to visit the Cloverdale Branch of the Sonoma County Library to explore the wealth of resources available dated April 26, 2023.
Thank you very much. And tonight, we have Brooke Green and John Coetzler to accept this proclamation. They'd like to speak.
Good evening, Commissioners, and let's start that over again. Good evening, council members and city staff. I've been in the City of Cloverdale as Commissioner on the Sonoma County Library Commission for two months now. I'm learning a lot, and there's so much to learn. Thank you for appointing me and issuing a proclamation honoring National Library Week. In exciting news for Cloverdale, an extensive renovation of the mostly unused patio area in our library is in the planning stages, and it'll be wonderful. Design ideas include a performance area and flexible seating. Major funding for this project came from an endowment from the estate of Claire McGowan, who was a long-term elementary school teacher in Cloverdale. The building will be upgraded to make it more ADA compliant at the same time. I can't wait to see what programs utilize this refreshed outdoor space. I hope you've seen the extraordinary quilts displayed around town. Sponsored by the Friends of the Cloverdale Library and Bolt at Home, a celebration of quilts runs through May 26. Quilts are displayed at five locations, and Friends of the Cloverdale Library are offering programs every Sunday except Mother's Day. I went to the last program, and I learned a quilting technique that was completely new to me, thanks to the Friends of the Cloverdale Library and Kate at Bolt for their hard work. At our last commission meeting, we approved two grants that will benefit Cloverdale and the larger Sonoma County community. Since 2015, the Sonoma County Library has partnered with Redwood Empire Food Bank in lunch at the library, a statewide educational initiative that combats summer food insecurity. The State Library has funded the program for a grant of $291,472. The program will offer free lunch for youth up to the age of eighteen at seven library branches, including Cloverdale, for the nine weeks of summer, and higher-paid teen interns who will support in-person lunch service while gaining practical work experience. There will also be four outreach visits to each summer lunch site with reading support and family literacy materials to support reading and learning at home. Sonoma County Library was selected for a competitive grant award of $19,692 from the California State Library through its State Parks Pass Grant Program, enabling under-resourced communities to take advantage of the benefits of California's state parks system. The primary goal of the project is to reach Spanish-speaking community members who have not traditionally accessed state parks. The project's activities include coordinating eight all-ages field trips from Roseland and Sonoma Valley Regional Libraries to Sugarloaf Ridge State Parks. One of Sonoma County Library's education initiatives is to strengthen the library's relationship with the County Juvenile Justice Center. There are many ways that librarians can contribute to the restorative mission of the juvenile courts. At our April meeting, the Commissioners approved an MOU which provides a librarian at Juvenile Hall. The employee will split their time between Juvenile Hall and Central Santa Rosa Regional Library. At Juvenile Hall, the librarian will work to improve literacy goals and introduce youth to public library services in order to help youth gain skills that will enable them to reintegrate into their communities. We look forward to providing more services to this underserved, at-risk sector of our community. Our branch manager Nicole Byrd is on a well-deserved vacation and couldn't join us tonight. I hope to see you at the library next Wednesday morning at eleven o'clock for a cup of coffee, and I'll introduce you to Nicole then. Nicole just finished her first year at our branch. The theme of this year's National Library Week is "There's More to the Story," illustrating the fact that in addition to the books in the library collection, libraries offer so much more. I'd like to introduce John Coetzler, Children's Services Librarian at Cloverdale Library, to tell you about e-resources available to our card members and interesting programs coming up at our branch.
Thank you, Mrs. Green.
Thank you, Brooke. And good evening, Mayor, City Council Members and City Staff. I'm John Coetzler, and I'm the Children's Services Librarian, and I'm just going to tell you quick three e-resources, give you a highlight of a couple of summer programs, so I won't take up too much time. The first thing I'd like to mention is that for children, we have a great children's resource called Book Flicks. It's a nonfiction and fiction reading resource for children that is available online twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and something that some parents already take advantage of, and even some teachers in the community. For teens, we have a resource called Learning Express, and actually, it's something that adults can use and even younger children in elementary school. It has skills building, and it also has practice tests, things for, such as the trades, like it has beauty license training, real estate license training, all sorts of things. Once again, free with your library card and available to you twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And finally, one of our newest resources, for those of you who like music, and I know that we have Friday night music coming up in just a few weeks from now or a month, and so Freegal is a free service that allows you to create playlists and plays thousands of songs. It allows you to download three songs a month to your device, and that's another service that we just added in the last few months. For summer reading, we hope everybody will participate in summer reading. We have for kids, a Safari Encounter, where we're going to have live animals at the library, which ought to be exciting, they usually are. We'll have a couple of magicians. We're also going to have Anye Onyemichi, who is an African drummer, who's going to do African drumming sessions. And then we have children's author Natasha Yim, who is going to be presenting a series of four writing workshops, starting in the third week of July into the second week of August. And she is a Disney writer. She's written three books for Disney and has been writing for over twenty-five years. So that's a really, and those two, last two programs are funded with Friends of the Library money. Quickly for teens, we have a teen craft lounge, we have metal stamping, and we have art journals, and we also have lotus lanterns. For adults, we have a succulent swap, we have a Cuban music program, and we have a bilingual pink party, and we have somebody called the Veggie Queen coming. So we hope you'll join us at the library this summer. I've given you a handout that'll be in your mailboxes that has the dates and times. Thank you so much for appreciating the library, and we appreciate you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
John.
Sorry, just a quick question, and it's probably a yes, but I'm just, the online learning for teens and for the trades that she mentioned, I just wanted to make sure that you had been in contact with LaFamilia Sana. They've actually been instrumental in bringing ESL classes to Cloverdale, and I'm sure that that's a resource that they would love to push out to their clients.
Yes, and in fact, I try to make certain that everybody that I, like, foresee, everybody that, to let the parents know as well. So yeah, those resources, I actually have a handout for parents that I give them with a number of the resources.
Oh, kids are the best way to get to the parents, aren't they?
They are, they are. And I tried to keep it short and brief because I work with children, so I know that they have short attention spans.
It's not that different with council members, so.
And I realize you have agenda. So thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions from council? Should we get a photo with you?
Where would you like us? Are you coming down?
Well, I'll be in the back, I'm always in the back row. So. There we go. Oh, okay. Yes. Turn around. Turn around.
Brooke, if you would, might just turn your proclamation.
Oh, yeah. Turn it around.
Yeah, your husband doesn't, he just wants you in the picture. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Get to get back.
I was going down there. Exactly. Thank you for coming. All right, next, D2, a proclamation for Administrative Professionals Week and Day. Councilmember Morganstern would like to read this one as well.
A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale recognizing the last week of April 2023 as Administrative Professionals Week and April 26, 2023 as Administrative Professionals' Day in Cloverdale. Whereas the Administrative Professionals Week established by the International Association of Administrative Professionals in 1952 traces its roots to the National Secretaries Association when the first National Secretaries Week, now known as Administrative Professionals Week, was held. The National Secretaries Association was established in 1942 as an initiative to recognize the importance of secretaries to the corporate workplace as well as showcase the field as a worthy profession. Whereas Administrative Professionals Week is now observed annually, the last week of April in this year will be celebrated April 23, 2023 to April 29, 2023, and is dedicated to recognizing and applauding the brilliant work of administrative personnel, and whereas Administrative Professionals Day in 2023 is celebrated on April 26, 2023 to recognize the important contributions, dedication, and valued work of administrative support staff, and whereas the work of administrative professionals requires advanced knowledge and expertise in communications, computer software, office technology, project management, organization, customer service, and other vital office management responsibilities, and whereas administrative professionals play an essential role in coordinating the office operation of businesses, government, education, and other organizations throughout the city of Cloverdale, and whereas administrative professionals are critical to the daily operations of the City of Cloverdale departments at City Hall, and the City Hall officially recognizes they are the first and sometimes only interaction with our citizens. These encounters and the direct assistance provided leave the community with lasting impressions of the city and its services, and the council and management sincerely appreciate their continued hard work, dedication, professionalism, and support to their professional growth, and therefore be it resolved, the City of Cloverdale designates April 23, 2023 to April 29, 2023 as Administrative Professionals Week, and today, April 26, 2023, as Administrative Professionals Day, both saluting all of the amazing administrative professionals who positively contribute to the Cloverdale community as well as dedicate themselves to the administrative profession dated April 26, 2023.
Thank you, council member. Anyone like to make a comment or questions? David, did you want to make a comment or no?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a brief moment to acknowledge our administrative professionals that represent our front desk staff, that includes our long-term employee Sandy Dersham. She's actually announced her retirement, so she's going to be departing soon, and she will be missed. But likewise, our other front desk staff, our administrative professionals, Letitia Baraja, as well as Teresa Valdez, both of them are consummate professionals. Not only do they greet everybody who comes into City Hall, they take a varied amount of phone calls and get those phone calls to the right staff, and they are just a pleasure to work with, and I just want to really acknowledge the great contribution they make, and I know they also wear multiple hats in the work that they do, so I'm just so thankful for having them as being part of our team.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any other comments? Moving on to D3, Proclamation for Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Does anyone want to read this? You will? Okay. Much easier, way easier to follow.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale declaring April 30 through May 7, 2023 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world and serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is the earliest established public service and provides the professional link between citizens, local governing bodies, and other government agencies, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas in the most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk, and whereas April 30 through May 7, 2023 will be the fifty-fourth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and whereas initiated in 1969 by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks and endorsed by all of its members through the United States.
And to date, I thought I'd give you some metrics, because as you know, most city clerks live and die by a post-it note, so that's what I wrote this on. So just so you know, in the last year, what I've processed myself, obviously with the help of all of our staff and council, 119 resolutions, six ordinances, 70 PRAs, 25 proclamations, 62 agendas, 66 minutes, 28 cancellations, significant web edits to our cloverdale.net. I've spearheaded our recreation division with the help of most of our staff, as well as quite a few other process improvements. I myself learned how to run a, do the elections. That was something new, and thank you to new council members who survived that with me, processed one measure, four candidates, and a write-in, as well as, like I said, the onboarding of our two new council members. Created a city LinkedIn profile, so hopefully all of you can attach yourself to that at one point. I've participated in 20 different trainings, one conference, and cleaned up all of the 2022 and 2021 resos and ordinances, because there was some turnover before my time, as well as a few other things. And as you know, my to-do list continues to grow bigger and bigger every day, but in that year, I can say for sure that I really enjoyed my time here. I've enjoyed supporting the council, supporting staff, and becoming part of the Cloverdale community, and I look forward to as many years as I can. So, thank you very much, and thank you for that proclamation. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Any comments? Please, go ahead.
Actually, I think that there's sentiment for this. Can we combine a round of applause for our great administrative assistants and for our amazing clerk?
As an administrative professional for the last 10 years, I really do want to commend the, all the administrative professionals working for our city and in our city, because people don't always see the work that they do behind the scenes, but without them, nothing would actually get done. So, yeah, they are very important positions. They support every position that the city has, and anybody who's worked with or has an administrative assistant secretary, any of those positions, and I've been all of them. They're really important, and I really support them as well, because I've been there, I've done it, and I'm excited to help them in any way I can.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I want to say something, Mike, when you said you learned a lot with the two new council members, me being one of them, thank you, because we did kind of muddle through that at a 4:45 in the afternoon, filing 5 o'clock deadline, you, we hammered it out, and I appreciate all the help you've been giving me for, you know, and just keeping me posted on things, and little deadlines to hit and all that, and it's a huge help, and I thank you, and I'm very gracious for it, so thank you again.
Yes?
Well, Mike, I'd just like to say, what have you been doing with your spare time, besides working on the internet and the website? So, I really appreciate having you here, and I'm going to ditto on what Brian said. You know, I was up for reelection last November, and you handled yourself very well. I've had the opportunity to work with a couple of different clerks during that process, and you did an excellent job, so thank you for coming to the city.
Ferguson, I missed your opportunity to speak.
I wanted to thank you for everything you do for all of us.
Would you like to circle back on that?
Mayor, I'm going to try to get this to work.
Three years, and you're the third clerk. So, and the other two were great, but to see the difference with you is pretty amazing,
Tucked away back here in the corner, so it's harder to see me, but I do appreciate it. I definitely want to recognize my records manager, Linda Webb.
to hit the ground running the way you did, and just make us look like we're doing great
She does an enormous amount of work, lots of PRAs, just like Mike explained, we have
and thriving here. It's because of people like you, and so we thank you, and we wouldn't be able to do
our own set of PRAs for the police department, she handles those, and has done a significant
what we're doing without you, because you actually do all the work, so thank you.
number to date, as well as any and all DOJ compliance audits that are extremely tedious,
Picture? You okay with that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's the anniversary photo.
time-consuming.
Anniversary photos.
She does a phenomenal job, and there's so many other things that she does, sits in dispatch
I really got some cheesy.
from time to time, as well as helps me, she's also my assistant, still haven't got quite
This is more than...
used to that, but she's been enormously helpful, so I wanted to make sure she was recognized as well, so thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, chief, and I apologize for that.
Not a problem, thank you.
All right, moving forward, D4, the presentation by the Golden Gate Railroad regarding the museum. I see a bunch of familiar faces in the crowd, so whoever wants to come up first?
Mayor, members of council if I can, why, we, for representatives from the Golden Gate Railroad Museum to come up to the desk. Just a brief overview, the Golden Gate Railroad Museum, and I know they're going to cover this in their presentation, is a nonprofit organization, and I think part of the reason the presentation is here before councils, their interest in establishing a presence in northern Sonoma County, and they're going to talk a little bit about that today in their presentation overview, possibly involving an excursion or even a museum in northern Sonoma County, and really thinking about locating in Cloverdale. So, without further ado, I'm going to introduce three representatives from the Golden Gate Railroad Museum, Tim Dolan, Jason Davis, and Scott Bowdish. We also have in the audience today the general manager for the Sommarin Area Rail Trans or SMART, Eddie Cummings, and our local and well-known, a SMART employee, Joanne Parker. So both of them are present and certainly can answer questions if they should come up regarding SMART. That's not specifically genderized tonight, it's really focused on Golden Gate Railroad Museum, but understanding it is a SMART write-away, Eddie is here if, should questions arise. So, with that, I'll turn it over to the Golden Gate Railroad Museum team to walk you through a brief presentation. There we go. Mayor Lann's council members, I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to come out and speak to you this evening. I know you have a very long agenda tonight, so I'll try to make it really quick for you. I know, you look at that and you say Golden Gate Railroad Museum, why are we up in Cloverdale? We are an organization that goes back to 1972, and we've been restoring steam locomotives and passenger equipment since that time. About three years ago, we relocated to Sonoma County, and we've been continuing to work on our equipment, and we're looking for a place to run. And Cloverdale seems to be a really good place to do that. We came up here a couple of weeks ago during your citrus fair and talked, sorry, I'm off script.
No worries, just go ahead and let me know when you want the next slide.
We talked to a number of your community members at the citrus fair, and we had overwhelming positive response. I already noticed we had a couple of emails that came in in support of this. So again, thank you for your time, and I'll get to our presentation. So, again, as I mentioned, the Golden Gate Railroad Museum is a nonprofit organization. We're dedicated to restoring and hopefully operating historic railroad equipment, and in the past, we've operated that equipment on Caltrain down on the peninsula. We've also operated on the former Southern Pacific, now Union Pacific, and we've also run up to Sacramento. So, now we're looking for a place, a more permanent home, to run more frequent excursions, and we do understand that, you know, Cloverdale has a nice little depot that we might be able to put to use, hopefully, and that's why we'd like to head here as well. So, actually, do you go back to the chair? Again, we are a 501(c)(3) organization, and we are owned for the, owned by the public for the public, and we answer to not only our members, our board members, our staff, our volunteers, and the public, in preserving a bit of railroad history and a bit of how California and the railroad worked together to build this great area that we've got. So, to further our goals of preserving and operating historic railroad equipment, we would like to partner with the City of Cloverdale and SMART to form what we're now calling the Russian River Scenic and Historic Railroad. It would be a nonprofit scenic railroad operated and based out of Cloverdale, California. And our, our mission is to restore, preserve, and develop the former Northwestern Pacific Main Line in and around Cloverdale, and to provide the highest economic and social benefit for the citizens of Cloverdale, and to create a destination for the traveling public. So, there's two parts to this. We have the traveling public, but we also have a community that we want to serve. So, we know there's a lot of people on 101 that are coming by, but as we found at the citrus fair, there's a lot of, lot of families in this town that are looking for things to do. And we asked them if they'd be interested in taking an excursion ride, and we had 424 people at the citrus fair that signed that petition. So, it wasn't necessarily a petition, but that were interested in that very thing. So, that is, again, why we're here talking to you. And we hope to fulfill the mission by doing the following implementation plan. We'd like to clean up and remove unsightly vegetation and trash from the rail yard across the freeway. We'd also like to remove any graffiti and trash from the Cloverdale depot and parking lot. And we'll maintain the right-of-way along the railroad, including vegetation removal for fire safety. And then, as a scaled approach, we're looking at operating limited excursion trains. We've partnered with the Northwestern Pacific Historical Society to use one of their locomotives and one of their cabooses to start up as quickly as possible. We've also looked into rail bikes from a company back east, that seat four passengers and are also ADA accessible with hand cranks as well. So, that was our short-term plan. The long range, again, we would really like to look at leasing the depot for museum exhibits, ticket sales, and then visitor information. As our volunteer base and our ridership base increases, we would look at increasing mileage. Right now, we're looking at going north to about, about three and a half miles north to the second tunnel. We would go under the first tunnel, under the cemetery and by the, by the park, and then we could also go south, depending on what kind of work is needed on the right-of-way, and we'll get to that on the next, next couple of slides. We also would look at moving our museum equipment north to offer increased service. We do have, as you can see, we do have existing museum equipment. We're not looking for equipment to operate, we're looking for a place to operate the equipment that we already have. And we would like to work with the businesses and community groups. We've already had a meeting, I actually made a presentation to the Kiwanis, if that's okay to mention them, they had me over for breakfast last week, and so they've already been excited about that and offered to help brush clearing, so that was nice of them. And then, working with those groups, we'd like to bring special events, charter service, and holiday trains, so again, a scalable operation. And most of all, importantly to you, bring both visitors and business into town. And our ongoing efforts are, and will continue to be, that we promote railroad safety to the public through Operation Lifesaver, which is a railroad safety plan. That's both for trespassing dangers and for grade-crossing safety awareness. We'll also continue to educate the public through living history, experiences of heritage railroad technology practices and artifacts. That would be both our rolling stock, and we have archive area, and a number of other displays that we'd like to set up for interpretive. We are also, as we mentioned, partnering with the Northwestern Pacific Historical Society to use some of their equipment and continue to interpret the impact of railroads on a developing nation, and this area in particular. And finally, provide historically informative and scenery-rich rail tours in Sonoma County. So, we're all familiar with the depot, and that would be, hopefully, the start of the operations. We'd clean up the landscape and the parking lot as well. And again, parking lot cleanup, and there is a nice yard north. We do realize that eventually that will be used for SMART, for SMART's use, and we would fully be looking already at other locations that we can move or expand our rail yard. We do currently have our equipment stored on SMART. We have a restoration and storage facility in Shellville, and so we, as time and volunteers allow, we would move that equipment up here. So, it would be an expansion of our existing infrastructure. So, the challenges, there's 25 years of vegetation on the right-of-way. The first picture is looking south from Cloverdale Airport. The other picture is a little further, further south of there. So, there will be vegetation cleanup, but that also will help for fire safety and fire prevention. We've had a very wet summer, so there's going to be more, more of that. So, that will be, first and foremost, is clearing the right-of-way vegetation. And then track conditions, we've walked approximately six miles, about six miles of the track so far, and most of it is actually in pretty good shape for sitting for 25 or 30 years. But we will have to take a closer look and restore as we go along. And so, in summary, the Golden Gate Railroad Museum can be a driving force for the community of Cloverdale, and we'd like to turn an underutilized resource into a public benefit for you and for the community, and we'll... That would be both our rolling stock and we have archive area and a number of other displays that we'd like to set up for interpretive. We are also, as we mentioned, partnering with the Northwestern Pacific Historical Society to use some of their equipment and continue to interpret the impact of railroads on a developing nation and this area in particular. And finally, provide historically informative and scenery-rich rail tours in Sonoma County. So, we're all familiar with the depot and that would be hopefully the start of the operations. We'd clean up the landscape and the parking lot as well. And again, parking lot cleanup. And there is a nice yard north. We do realize that eventually that will be used for SMART, for SMART's use. And we would fully be looking already at other locations that we can move or expand our rail yard. We do currently have our equipment stored on SMART. We have a restoration and storage facility in Shellville. And so we, as time and volunteers allow, we would move that equipment up here. So it would be an expansion of our existing infrastructure. So the challenges, there's 25 years of vegetation on the right of way. The first picture is looking south from Cloverdale Airport. The other picture is a little further, further south of there. So there will be vegetation cleanup, but that also will help for fire safety and fire prevention. We've had a very wet summer, so there's going to be more of that. So that will be, first and foremost, is clearing the right of way of vegetation. And then track conditions, we've walked approximately six miles, about six miles of the track so far. And most of it is actually in pretty good shape for sitting for 25 or 30 years. But we will have to take a closer look and restore as we go along. And so in summary, the Golden Gate Railroad Museum can be a driving force for the community of Cloverdale. And we'd like to turn an underutilized resource into a public benefit for you and for the community. And we'll maintain and operate the right of way until SMART's arrival. And we will work with SMART and the city to best continue service to Cloverdale once SMART arrives. And finally, the Golden Gate Railroad Museum is seeking the support of the Cloverdale City Council to move forward with its expansion to Cloverdale. If you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments?
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just a little curious to see what SMART thinks of it. Eddie, I don't know if you're prepared to say anything, but I'd be interested to know about the working relationship you have with SMART.
So not prepared to speak, but always happy to. So, starting when the museum reached out to SMART and said that they were interested in looking at this, my first thing was, we need to talk to the city. And I really wanted to know what the city thought about this, were they supportive of it. We haven't dug into any of the logistics. There's a lot of things that have to be worked out to make this a reality. But the bottom line was, I wanted to make sure that the city was comfortable with this. This is something the city supported. So really here to listen and learn tonight and to hear from the city council. We have a good relationship. As I mentioned, they have their vehicles stored at our lot in Shellville. And we are working right now on doing some excursion service out of there in that area. So things are good. You know, but like I said, I just want to caution everyone, there's a lot of logistics that have to be worked out to make this a reality. Any questions in particular, specifics?
Well, no, I just wanted to get SMART's input on it. And, you know, if those logistics could be worked out, you know, I'd be interested in hearing more, what the next steps would be once those are done. But you have my interest, yes.
Thank you, Eddie. Anyone else with Eddie?
General, you know, I think the theme tonight is communication. If there's a common thread between all of this, we communicate with our pickleball folks and our cannabis folks and our train folks. And I think this is just an important, really, first step. And Eddie brings up a really good point. And I know that you and your staff and your group are, you know, you do railroads, you know railroads, it's your passion. And there's no railroads without complications. Just, you know, it's amazing how complicated something that just kind of goes in a straight line can be. But this is just the start to being able to say, hey, let's get faces with the names and let's just start talking. You know, I was able to visit the booth at Citrus Fair. And, you know, I think people are excited. I, you know, I haven't ever met anybody who doesn't like a train. It's like somebody doesn't like chocolate, you know? It's kind of like, oh, I don't know if I can really trust that person, you know? I mean, everybody I know really, really is, you know, I mean, it's not a matter of like, is there passion? It's like, what's the level of passion for this? So I think this is just a really important first step that we all just sort of get introduced to each other, get to know each other, and, you know, find out what those expectations are. And, you know, I mean, what I always tell people is, if you want to know how great the train is going to be for tourism between Cloverdale and Hillsburg, hop on our Route 60 bus and just take a look and ride along on Asti Road, ride along on the, you know, take the milk, take the milk bus down to Hillsburg and Windsor, and it gives you a taste of what the rail line is like through that valley. And it is one of the most beautiful picturesque places. We're going to have visitors, we're going to have a visitor problem, which I would wholeheartedly, you know, welcome. So I just, I think it's great that your group has come to us. You're already building a relationship, a working relationship with SMART. So let's just keep the channels of communication open. But it's going to be, this is a complex, long haul. And what we have to do is just, we all have to talk to each other all the time and avoid misunderstandings and just communicate. And Eddie's one of the best communicators, honestly, I've ever worked with, so we're in great hands.
Speaking of communication, I want to be very clear. This is not a replacement for the SMART train. Okay? I just want to be very clear because I know, I know, I know somebody in the public's going to say that, right? And I want to be very clear, we are dead set, our board is dead set on getting that train to Cloverdale. That's our plan, we're working on it. And the lady in the back talks to me every day and makes sure that our agency is always 100% focused on getting the train to Cloverdale. So that's our intent, that's our plan. But this is something that, as we work through this, we will make sure that whatever we do, we'll be thinking about, the SMART train's going to be here, where do we need to put the museum, you know, and make sure that we can both fit and live together if this is where we head.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If I could circle back to what Eddie said, in the interest of full disclosure, I do work for SMART. I'm a locomotive engineer and conductor, I've been here since the beginning. So I'm fully committed to this area. I don't have any dealings, though, with any of the negotiations with SMART. So that is, that's Scott's, Scott's area. But I can tell you that I'm just as committed as SMART getting up here to Cloverdale as well, because I'm looking forward to run up here. And again, we have no intention of being a replacement or any kind of excuse for SMART not getting here. We want to work with SMART, provide a service. We're a 10 to 15 mile an hour excursion train. When I'm at SMART, I'm going 79 miles an hour down the track, trying to get you where you want to go as fast as you can. So it's two different, two different things. And we're going to work as much as we can to get SMART here and get ourselves here as well.
I just think that if it becomes a reality, it might be a really wonderful win-win situation for Cloverdale and for the train history museum. And I think people would probably come from all over. And I could see school day trips, bringing their children. It'd be a real learning experience.
Well, thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Mayor, before we go, I just wanted to mention that we did receive correspondence from resident Mr. Harry Martin. It's included in your packet, expressing his support for bringing the Golden Gate Railroad Association to Cloverdale. So just want to acknowledge that that communication was received after the agenda was published.
Thank you. I also want to make one quick comment. I remember at the state of Cloverdale breakfast that we had, Eddie referred to her as the lady in the back, but she's the employee of the century. Joanne Parker made a comment about the way she could write grants to bring the SMART train instead of going south to the north, starting from the north to the south. And when I saw this come up, I went, talk about a partnership that could clear the tracks and start making that a reality. I think this will actually speed up the SMART process than more than hinder it. So I'm excited, not only for this, but for the opportunities that it will bring as well. So I'm so in support of this. And so thank you guys very much for including us and wanting to be here. My question, though, I do have one question. Short term, what does that mean to you? Your...
How many months are short term?
How many years are short term? What does that, what does that mean to you?
We've got a divided, short term is prior to SMART getting here, long term is working with SMART.
That's a good dodge of that question. That was great. So you have no idea of timeframes, possibly, of things to make things start rolling, of anything?
All, you know, Eddie and I will get together and...
Yeah, let's... We're locking you in a little bit here. I'm, and I'm not, we're not holding you to it, but I mean, is that, are we talking a week? Are we talking a year? Are we talking a decade? You talk about 30 years since the train has been here. You're right, it was like 1990 when they shut it down, and here we are 33 years later. So...
So there's a lot of things to work through. We have to have a lot of conversations. I mean, we haven't even talked to the attorneys yet, right? You know what's going to happen then, right? So there's just a lot of things that have to be worked out. I mean, it looks very simple on paper, but then you get into things, okay, what about insurance? What about this? How does this affect us? What's it going to cost? How we get... There's just a ton of things that have to be worked out. We honestly have not had those conversations at all to date. Again, I wanted to know that the city was on board, the city was supportive of this. Now that I, it sounds like you are, then we can start these conversations and start working out some of the details and then get it to the attorneys.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, well, it looks like you have very strong support, so thank you all for coming and your presentation. Is there anyone in the public with a hand up? Because there's no one else in the public that doesn't belong to this group.
Thank you, Mayor. No one's raising their hand online at this time.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to D5, a presentation of Sonoma Water, Russian River Water Forum.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I want to take this opportunity to introduce the Sonoma Waters Assistant General Manager, Mr. Mike Thompson. A little bit of background on this item before we begin the presentation this evening. Back in November, we were, both Mayor Lands and I participated in an interview that was conducted by a firm, a strategic communication firm, Kearns &amp; West. They were engaged by Sonoma Water Agency through a grant to help them facilitate, you know, a conversation around a planning exercise to discuss the Potter Valley project. We all know that the Potter Valley project's in the midst of a number of changes as PG&E is kind of stepping away from its long-term historic responsibilities. And as we look to this, this project now is a critical contributor to our water supply, there's a discussion about how the decommissioning by PG&E is going to affect the downstream users, both in the Eel River in Mendocino County, but also the long-term diversion of water from the Eel River watershed to Lake Mendocino and ultimately down through the Russian River, providing a critical water supply addition to our water supply. So this group is being formed, referred to as the Water Forum, to look at possible solutions. This process, I think, has gotten some legs and is starting to move very quickly. I asked Mr. Thompson if he'd be willing to join us tonight to give us an overview of the planning process and give us an update. And gratefully, Mike was willing to join us. So just to point out in your packet, the agenda report, I think, gives a pretty good introduction overview of this item. Likewise, the report by Kearns &amp; West, which is a summary of interview findings, gives you kind of a perspective of the different stakeholders involved. And then there's also some group, the Planning Group Charter, as well as a nomination process. And I think Mike's going to, Mr. Thompson's going to touch on that a little bit this evening. So, Mike, turn it over to you.
I think that concludes my presentation. That was very good. So, thank you, Mayor Lands, members of the city council. I'm Mike Thompson with the Sonoma County Water Agency. And really, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. And also would like to acknowledge your city manager, David Kelly. One, he actually put together a very informative, yet concise, agenda report. He helped me polish the presentation. And I've really appreciated his involvement we've had so far and his continuing involvement because this is going to be a very critical issue for really our whole region. So we can move to the next slide, please. I'm just going to give you a quick overview of what I'm going to talk about. Little, real brief history, little information on the Potter Valley project. I'm then going to spend most of the time working or talking about the Russian River Water Forum that we're planning to convene, talking about something, that portion of that called the Planning Group. That'll go into detail on that, you've probably seen that in your package. There will be a water supply caucus being formed and also a leadership council, which I hope the city of Cloverdale will be interested in participating in. So, and then we'll talk about some next steps after that. So next slide. So, as the next slide comes up. So, real quick about Potter Valley. And again, I'm not sure how aware everyone is of it, but it's a project that was actually built in 1906 by, originally by the Snow Mountain Power Company, bought by PG&E in the 20s. And in 1922, Lake Pillsbury on Scott Dam, Lake Pillsbury was created by the construction of Scott Dam. And during those early years, for the first about 70, 80 years, our area used to get about 100, our region used to get about 150,000 acre feet of water per year. And just to put that in perspective, our water supply pool in Lake Mendocino is about 70,000 acre feet per year. So it's, it's a lot of water and it's really what allowed, was one of the main feeders of the engine that allowed Sonoma County to grow and become what we are. Those diversions were cut back from a regulatory, because of regulatory requirements about 10, 15 years ago. And over the last 10 to 15 years, we've gotten about 60,000 acre feet a year out of, from the Potter Valley project. Again, the way it works is you have water in Lake Pillsbury, they release it, goes down the river about 10 miles to a place called Van Arsdale. And there's a Lake Van Arsdale Cape Horn Dam. And then there's a tunnel that runs between there and Potter Valley with about a 400-foot drop, and that's what they use to generate hydroelectric power. And then that water goes into Lake Mendocino. So one of the things I think we've all, especially the Northern County and city of Cloverdale has really experienced the last few years is with the drought that we've had has been, there's been water, not so much the city, but there's been really a big water shortage as you were, you really did a great job in conserving water and helped preserve this, what water we had in Lake Mendocino. So we know that even with Potter Valley, that our water supply is, can be more resilient. We've done, at the Sonoma County Water Agency, we've looked at 110 years of what we call the hydrologic record, all the precipitation records we have going back for 110 years. And we've looked, we've looked at that, we've also looked at what are the demands, water demands on the, on Lake Mendocino in particular. And what we find is that in eight out of 10 years, without Potter Valley, there won't be enough water to meet all of the demands. And on the most critical years, and actually two of those 10 years, Lake Mendocino is predicted to go dry at some point during the year. That's a huge impact to the economies. We've done some preliminary studies that are looking in tens of millions of dollars, probably most, more likely up into the hundreds of millions of dollars of impacts on the economy of the Russian River basin. Also, it will have some pretty harsh environmental effects on fisheries, especially listed fisheries within the Russian River itself. Next slide. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the water, Russian River Water Forum, and I'm going to make a little confession here that I'm, and David knows this, I'm a big optimist. And one of the things I've seen in our region, you know, we've been through a lot of fires, we've been through fires, we've been through floods, we've been through pandemics, and I've just been really inspired by, I'm a fifth generation from Sonoma County, I love this area, and I've loved to see how, how this area pulls together and does what we need to do to take care of each other. And so I, so I, we're approaching this, I'll just tell you, with, I got this sense of optimism, not because of who, like, we are at the water agency, it's because who our region is, and it's, it's an amazing region. As we look at going forward, though, this is a, you know, the railroad was complex. This is maybe, maybe, maybe even more than the railroad, but extremely complex on the issues facing the potential decommissioning or the planned decommissioning of this. And what, and I'll just give you a real quick background, when a, when a decommissioning occurs, what utilities, and this isn't PG&E, but any owner anywhere in the US, if they decide to decommission, they, they generally probably have three main goals. One is when they're done with decommissioning of a hydroelectric project, that whoever was the owner will want to have no more liability. They don't want to own anything, they want to be clear of liability. They also will likely want to reduce the impact to their ratepayers, the cost of decommissioning, and re-minimize the cost to their, to their shareholders. So those, it's really a business transaction. And so for us, for our region, to continue to have this important source of water, someone else is going to need to own the, these facilities that allow the water to come through. And so one of the, so these, there are these four big questions or four big areas that we have to kind of, we're taking this elephant and trying to get at it in bites. But one of them is ownership, is who's going to own and operate and acquire and modify this facility? One thing, because it is really a regional asset, it most likely is not going to be the Sonoma County Water Agency on its own, it's, we think, far bigger than, than us. And so it's going to need, need to be something that doesn't exist. And so a new governmental public entity is going to need to be formed to own and operate And so a new governmental public entity is going to need to be formed to own and operate it. The second, there are second really big technical questions of what do we want? What does this, we being our region, what does our region, if we acquire, what do we want to acquire? How will it work? We really need to look at, and for this to be successful, we believe there needs to be benefit to both basins, both the Eel River and Russian River basin. And so we've talked about a two-basin solution, shared objectives, but we're really looking to find solutions that benefit both basins. But those solutions will come out of the water supply and fisheries type area. Another huge area is financial, is that this water that we've received in the, in the Russian River for the last hundred years has been received for free. It's flowed through and it's been, it's been a, abandoned, what they call abandoned water from the project. So it's been free and it can't be free anymore because there is going to now be a cost to operate the diversion. So there's going to need to be a, how are we going to modify it? Where's that money going to come from? How are we going to operate it? So there's financial questions. And then one of the last big questions are water rights. And there are some really significant water right changes that are going to be happening, whether or not our process is successful through the decommissioning and through the change in the way this operates. There's going to be some really big changes. And so as, as city manager Kelly teed it up, we started in, you know, there are these big questions. And, and much of the work that we've done in the interviews, thank you for participating, Mayor Lands, and city manager Kelly for participating in those interviews. This started with a lot, and it's happening still, with a lot of listening and a lot of learning on our part and also sharing of information. There's, I mean, a lot of communication that has to take place. And we're, we're in this process. It's a very dynamic process. It's gonna, it's not this hard structure. We're going to continue to listen, learn as we move through. Because the only way this is going to happen is if it's, we all incrementally learn. We all incrementally work together. Next slide. So the, the structure of the Russian River Water Forum, what we've heard coming out of all of the interviews and from briefings with, we've had briefing with our state assembly members, state senator, our, our local county officials and our, our federal congresspeople who represented in Congress. And what we've heard from everyone is that in kind of crafting a local solution, it really needs to be broad-based. It needs to be inclusive. It needs to include both basins, Lake County, Humboldt County, Mendocino County, Sonoma County. But it really needs to be large and inclusive, to make sure everyone's at the table. And that, we also see that there is this benefit beyond Potter Valley into the future, where we can operate our Russian River basin more cohesively and holistically as opposed to different silos of people who manage different parts of the river. And much of it goes unmanaged. But initial focus on Potter Valley, because that is really crucial. The PG&E is scheduled to have their decommissioning plan filed with FERC in January of 2025. So we have this clock ticking. So we have to proceed quickly on that. But over time, we would want to look at more broad resiliency. Next slide, please. So that leads to the, the, this, the structure that we have before you. And so I think you all can see this. So at the, this is, really comes from what we've heard, informing what the structure for the Russian River Water Forum. At the hub of the wheel is something we're calling the Planning Group. And it's a, as Mayor, or excuse me, city manager Kelly has in your package, it describes who's in that. But that, that Planning Group is really the hub of this wheel. And the idea is to bring together interests in both basins, multiple counties, to try to come up with a local-based collaborative solution to how are we going to deal with this. And it's really meant to have, have a place for communication, to improve understanding between different interests, to do problem solving, to, and ideally identify a solution. So that'll all take place in the Planning Group. There we have, we're setting up four working groups with hit each of those questions. Who will own it? What do we want to acquire? How does that have to be modified? How are you going to pay for it? And how do the water rights work? Those are, each one of those things are, in some ways, bigger than anything we've tackled before. But we're, we're, we're going into it. And so out of those groups, potential solutions will percolate out of those, go to the Planning Group for discussion. And the idea in the Planning Group is to ideally come to consensus of there is, but it's not required. There's no voting. It's really about communication, building understanding. And solutions that have broad support, even if there isn't complete consensus, they'd be moved up to what we're calling the Leadership Council. The Leadership Council is going to be made up of publicly elected officials. So cities, counties, tribal representatives, tribes, and also our state and federal legislators. They may not be up, but they're, they're staffed. But that, that's where the, again, it creates another form of discussion. And out of that, we would see potentially solutions coming. And any of these solutions that we come with, these aren't decision-making bodies. This is really communication and understanding. As you can see, all, anything that is a potential solution, all would have to come back to the individual councils and boards for ultimate action and decision. So anyways, next, the next two slides, I think I've pretty much covered already, just so you can probably slip through that one. And the Planning Group, we talked real briefly about that. It's a many interests. And from Sonoma County, we have, in particular, we have six, there's, it's a, the, the forum's going to be roughly a thirty, we're estimating about thirty members on it with 26 set seats and an unlimited, as many tribal seats as tribes want to participate, since they're separate governments. But drilling down into, I think, what was probably of interest to you is our, the, what we're calling our water supplier seats. And there are six representative, six water supply seats. We have, there's one for the North County, which David Kelly and Terry Crowley will be filling those seats, representing the, the North Sonoma County water suppliers. There'll be a one for the West County. Sonoma County Water Agency will have representatives on it and three from our water contractors. And, and then again, the idea is that our seats aren't there necessarily representing a particular city, but they're there representing a particular group of interests. So your, your representatives are really representing North County water interests as, because there, there may be differences in other areas, but we need to have those representations. So, next slide. Because there are a limited number of seats, we're, we've formed what is what we're calling a, a Sonoma County Water Supplier Caucus. And it is, and it includes, it's a lot bigger than those six. And it's a place for, for, again, for exchanging communications, for understanding, for someone who, a person who's going to be representing the water suppliers on, in a, on a particular, in, in the Planning Group for a particular meeting, they will understand what interests they're representing from the overall water supplier. So it's key to, for us to really understand all of our interests. And also, it's going to be key to have our water suppliers have people who engage in the different four working groups, because that's where a lot of the heavy lifting. We, that's where we jokingly says, those are the graduate level courses. So there's, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of heavy, heavy work done there. Next slide. And I already spoke about the Leadership Council as well. Again, it's non-voting, but it's to consider options that will get risen, percolate up. And, and again, it doesn't have to be consensus. As example, there are some things, for example, if we're talking about forming a Russian River regional entity, Humboldt County and Lake County and other Eel River interests, that's not really, it's a place for discussion, but there's not going to be voting. And if there, if there would be a critical mass of, of Russian River interests saying, yeah, this is what we want to form, then that's what would, would be moved forward to this different council. So again, not consensus, but ideal is, is consensus and, and really a lot of transparent communication. So, next slide. Our next steps, our first meeting is coming up in a few weeks in Ukiah. And of the Planning Group, at that meeting, there will be, I can just give you a quick heads up on the agenda. There will be an understanding of the interests and then real high-level descriptions of all the working groups and some of the issues that are, will be tackled there. We're going to continue to work as, with the, the caucus. I know we've got, we'll be continuing to meet on that. And, and as we move forward this, I don't know if any of you know Jake McKenzie. He's a former Roanoke Park City Council member and involved in many different things. But when I met with Jake about this, his advice was to hasten slowly. So we're, we're going to be moving quickly and thoughtfully and doing a lot of listening and a lot of learning. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Let's go around the table. Questions or comments on this side? If I smear anything?
Well, I, I, I think there's really a lot to digest. And it sounds like it's something that's desperately needed. My question has to do with the meeting that you're going to have in Ukiah. You know, right now, there's folks at home watching us on, on YouTube. Will we have the option to, to view those meetings without physically being up in Ukiah?
Yes. There will be a couple of ways. We are strongly encouraging those who are actually on the Planning Group to be there in person because we think there's, these are, we really want to start building those relationships and having those face-to-face communications. But the, 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 the meeting will be broadcast in a hybrid setting and also recorded. So if you're not able to actually be there, it's, the, the plan, it's going, it'll be, it's a five-hour meeting is what's planned for, so from 10 to 3. So it's a long one. So, yeah, so you'll be able to both either watch it remotely or watch a recording of it.
And of course, I'm, I'm sure through our city, we'd be provided with the agenda and, and the, and all the information we need to get logged in, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, for hastening slowly. Knowing Jake, that's especially funny. I guess I, to, to kind of echo the question from our, our last presenter, how many months in hastening slowly? As far as in the, the, the planning process for ultimately creating an entity?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And I can partially say I don't know. But I can also, I can, what I can share with you is that our, are actually our first goal and this, just even having the planning meeting is going to help that. Our first goal is actually to influence PG&E, to influence PG&E's decommissioning plan. What our first goal is to, to do our best to ensure that their plan doesn't preclude the continued operation of this diversion. So that's our, that's like our, our first thing is, and so we have, we have been in communication with them. They know we're doing this. They positively received it. And, but our first goal is to, is, and is to, to, to have that. So the, we'll get the first indication of success sometime next year when they've come out with their draft decommissioning plan. And our hope is that it, it shows the, the continued existence of, of, of the water diversion structures. Are, from a timing standpoint, given that the, the decommissioning plan has to be submitted to FERC by 2025, Jan, I think it's January 2025, that's why I said we have to hasten, because we need, while we may, for example, while we may need not, we may not need to actually have a new organization actually formed, we need to know what it will be, I believe, in enough detail to where we can credibly go to PG&E, is this is the organization that's going to be formed. And in the interim, here is a proxy group that can represent them. So, so we have to be far enough, I think, along to get that. We have to understand what is it we want to require from them. So there, so the clock really is ticking on this. So there, there is a lot to cover. And I would, I would point to, I would probably say somewhere in the area of two to three years, we have to have made very significant process, progress.
Deadline always helps.
It does. And actually, and if I can add on that, what? Having a deadline like this and a, an issue that is so important to our region is one that's, I think, going to help unify us. And it's going to help us form this, this district, I really believe, or whatever this entity will be. But again, once formed, I know some of the other, others have said that this is going to be so powerful beyond just this. We, there's been efforts in the Russian River to try to form something for, I've been at the Water Agents now for 28 years, and there's been this desire to do that, but there's never been this issue that's coalesced and converged. People are converged on this might be that issue that allows us to, to build something that's, that is far beyond this. But thanks, I, I agree with that.
I agree. And I, I, and I was, I was actually very happy to see Janet Polly on the, as one of the, the members of the, I think it's the technical advisory staff. I actually, you know, I was working with her and Carrie Brown on the, in the Upper Russian River Managers Group, which is kind of a nascent precursor. And then also just kind of watching as the inland Mendocino Water and Power Group was trying to do this very thing and they, their, their FERC application failed. So, yeah, I think that with the timeframe, we are now, we have a, we have motivation. But I think that one of the, also serving on Sonoma Clean Power, I know one of the biggest challenges is going to be working with PG&E. So I, and, and getting them to, yeah, getting them to work with the, the community. So I'm hoping that that, we're going to have a better experience than maybe we've had in the past.
Thank you for that.
I, I see you and I know what the problem is. I guess that's a nice way of putting it, so.
Yeah, it sounds like a Taylor Swift song.
It probably is, subconsciously, so.
But the, one of the things actually, and this is where we come and we listen and we learn, one of the things that may be very beneficial, and it's something we'll, we can work on drafting, would be a letter maybe from the city council to elected, to our congressman or to PG&E, encouraging them to, to work with us and that we're here. And I think, I think the more voices on that, the better, so.
I'd be surprised if there wasn't support for that. The other place I would recommend is that I'm also, I serve on the Sonoma County Mayor's and Council Members Legislative Committee and probably just reaching out to that group. And Chris Rogers, who chairs that, we probably could have coordinated effort between all of, all of the nine cities. But, you know, since Cloverdale has a significant amount of skin in this particular game, I think it's, and I think the difficulty for us is communicating to our constituents is that, you know, I, and, and you alluded to it in your presentation earlier and that. And so our constituents and your constituents and, you know, our ratepayers and your ratepayers, is that that water was a waste product for a hydroelectric plant that was built in 1904. It is being decommissioned and now the water is no longer free. And getting that message out, having, helping people understand that, helping elected officials really understand that and creating support for it in our region, I think, is going to be vitally important. So again, I think we're, tonight's theme seems to be communication. It's the through point and just starting those conversations that this is where we, this is where we were. This is how we got here and this is where we, we need to go and what the timeline is. I just, it's a great start. So I appreciate the, the presentation. It is indeed a lot to digest and think about. But, well, just to, to, you know, pull a phrase out of the ether again, water is life. It is the most important service that we provide our constituents and our ratepayers. And unfortunately, I think it's, we, we take it for granted because we have safe, clean water. And it's always been accessible. And we, and now we actually kind of in the, this is the first time this generation has to take on a, the challenge like this. So, yeah, now we've, we've got a, we've got a deadline and we're going to have to work together to get there. So I, we're going to need a little time to digest, but this is a good start. So thank you for the presentation.
Yeah. Anyone else with a comment?
No, I, I just wanted to know what the next step is for the city. You mentioned our city manager, David Kelly, is going to have a seat at the table. Are you looking for other elected officials to also take a seat at that table?
At a seat at, at the leadership, at the leadership, on the Leadership Council. So the, the Planning Group will, will primarily be populated by staff and technical. And then the, there will be a policy level group made up of elected officials. And that probably won't get And that probably won't get started until the late summer, early fall timeframe. And so between now and then, if, yeah, I would say with regard to next steps for you, it would be very helpful if you were to, one, strongly encourage, I can't encourage enough, that the City of Cloverdale has a representative on the Leadership Council. And if, and if you're able to let us know, you know, through City Manager Kelly of who you would like to sit on that, both a primary and an alternate, that would be very helpful, and it would kind of help. I think it would help us start to grease those skids, those wheels for other, for other cities as well.
Well, I, Mr. Mayor, I would like to see this put to a subcommittee for some discussion at some point, and I'm not sure which subcommittee.
That's what I was going to suggest as well, Vice Mayor. And it's already been on the Finance, Admin, and Police to this point, so I think it'd be good to keep it there. You agree? Everyone's all right with that?
Yeah.
I think that would be the best. Nothing beats urgency and emergency to create the collaboration. That's my favorite time that everyone gets along, is when it's.
Can I quote that?
When things are hitting the fan.
I need someone to.
You go right ahead.
Sounds funny.
Just not next to Jake. Just kidding. I have two quotes there now.
Right? Oh, oh, oh.
That is so true.
You want to hear the full Jake quote? No. I'm sure. Jake's wonderful.
So with that, let me open it up to the public. I don't see anyone in our audience, so if anyone in the virtual world has any comments, please raise your hand.
Mayor, no one's raising their hand at this time.
Saying none, then we will bring it back to the dais. Any other further closing comments? Thank you so much for your presentation. We appreciate it. And we will be bringing this to a subcommittee, right back where it was before, and discuss this further, and we look forward to talking to you again.
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity, and thank you for your good questions and discussion. I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, next, D6, Presentation, Pavement Management?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Five-minute break. It's 7:30. We'll reconvene at 7:35. Thank you, everyone. We'll reconvene at 7:36. The next item is D6. It's a presentation regarding pavement management technical assistance program, or PTAP.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The item before you is going to be a presentation by our City Engineer Vanessa Apadaka on what's referred to as the PTAP 23 report. This particular report was paid for and commissioned by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And it's a, basically a report that helps to identify the condition of our pavement throughout the city, and it's a very detailed report. The report was, our presentation was made to our Public Works Subcommittee on the findings of the report and some of the different scenario and options outlined therein. And the recommendation was, because of the value of the information, to bring it to council for a formal presentation. And one of my takeaways from this is that it could be a very useful report for considering and prioritizing future transportation improvement projects, and also give you a lot of data around what the cost is for specific road treatments, literally on every street within the City of Cloverdale. So it's very, again, I think, a very valuable and informative report. But with that said, I'd like to go ahead and invite Vanessa Apadaka, our City Engineer. She's going to give you a little overview of the report.
Thank you, thank you, David. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. I'm going to share a screen here. Okay, today we're looking at the lovingly called the PTAP report. It is the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, the MTC. They provide pavement management technical assistance program, referred to as the PTAP, that uses federal dollars to help Bay Area cities and counties by implementing, updating, and maintaining pavement management databases and providing accurate pavement condition data to cities and counties for decision-making. For the PTAP 23 program, the city applied for and was awarded Round 23 Assistance in March of last year. The total project cost for this report is $15,000, and the city contribution for that was $3,000. MTC assigned caps, capital, asset, and pavement services as the consultant for the work. The purpose of the program, if you will, is to balance and identify high-priority projects and kind of balance with cost-effectiveness. The goal is to achieve an optimal network pavement condition index somewhere in the low to mid-80s and maintain it at that level. And so just a quick overview of city conditions, existing city conditions. The city maintains, has 32 centerline miles of city streets. That's about 65 lane miles of city streets. Our current street network pavement condition index, or PCI, is 60, which places us in the fair category condition. This report analyzed four different budget scenarios, and we'll go through those. But at a quick, high-level summary, Scenario 1 is unconstrained budget, as if we had all the money in the world to do all of the road repairs necessary. Scenario 2 looks at our current investment level. Scenario 3 is, would be what is needed to maintain our current PCI of 60. And Scenario 4 is what it would take to increase the PCI by five points to 65. This is just a quick overview again of current conditions. It's just a way to look at the data. We have 37 sections of arterial streets with an average PCI of 64. That's about 15 lane miles. We have 17 sections of collector streets, about five lane miles with an average PCI of 53. And we have 185 residential sections, about 45, 46 lane miles with an average PCI of 58. And that shakes out into our PCI of 60. Table 3 in the report is another way to look at our existing roads currently. Roads that are in good condition, we're at about 54%. Roads in fair condition, we're looking at about 17%. About 11% of our roads are in poor condition, and 18% of our roads are in very poor condition. Here it is at a glance. This is kind of an overall map of the city, and it shows the various categories. Good, fair, with non-load-related, I guess, distress, and that's typically weather-related. And so you see a couple of sections that, with this kind of weather-related distress. And you also have fair that is load-related, which is generally by traffic quantity and weight. And you also see the poor and very poor areas here in the city. So Scenario 1 is unconstrained budget. This assumes there is no limit to the money, and it would result in zero deferred maintenance at the end of the five-year period. This, this report looks at a five-year period. And so that would be, require a budget of about $31 million over the next five years. That would result in an overall street network PCI of 84 in 2027, which is kind of the goal of the program, which is why they, why they analyze that scenario. Scenario 2 looks at our current investment level. Our current budget reflects approximately 1.4 million over the next five years. If we maintain our investment level, that's projected to result in a decline in the network PCI of about five points. It's also projected to increase our very poor streets from 18% to a little over 21%. Our overall street network would be 55 in 2027. And so the report recommends that we increase funding for street maintenance. Here's another image. Scenario 2, current investment levels. This is kind of an overview of what treatments would be proposed over the next five years. You can see there's a lot of slurry seals, as shown in these bright green lines. There's a few areas that require cracks, crack sealant, and we have a little section up here that is a two-inch overlay. This largely is intended to kind of maintain the good structures that we have now, as opposed to digging in and fixing some of the worst-case streets we've got. Scenario 3, to maintain the current PCI of 60, requires a budget of $5 million over the next five years, and that would result in PCI of 60 in 2027. Scenario number four looks at increasing the PCI to 65. That requires a $10 million budget over the next five years, resulting in a PCI of 65 in 2027. And this is my last slide here. This is another way to look at the comparisons of the different scenarios that were analyzed. You see here is our current condition, and kind of the colors lay out the percentages of the good, fair, poor, and very poor roads. If we had $31 million, we could get up to just about 100%. This remaining half a percent is somewhere between the poor and fair. It's pretty good, though. And then you can see here the current, under the current funding, the good roads would go up a little bit, but so would the very poor roads. And then we looked at the other scenarios here, current PCI and increasing the PCI to five, to 65. And so this is pretty short and sweet, but that's kind of a, it summarizes a 95-page report. And if you guys have any questions, I'm ready.
Vanessa. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So thank you for, once again, sharing that report with us. Councilmember Wheeler and myself had the opportunity to view this back in March when you first presented it. And, you know, personally, I was looking for a much worse report. I, I'm pretty pleased with how good our streets are. Of course, the $31 million over, I think it's a 10-year period to bring them up to a different level is unrealistic for us to do that. But I think the reports are very detailed, and like I said, I'm pretty impressed with the way our streets are. So I don't know what else to say about that. And I agree, as you had indicated before, that maintain the level of the good streets now before they fall into disrepair, I think, is the wise move for us to make. So, thank you.
Well, actually, thank you, Vanessa, for a thorough report. And actually, we should thank MTC for what was actually a very expensive report if we had tried to execute it ourselves. So that was good foresight on their part. I guess I'm not quite as optimistic. I don't, this is not a hole, this is a chasm. And it's kind of a, it's unfortunately, it's a reflective of policy to just kind of build haphazardly its brawl. policy to just kind of build haphazardly its brawl. I, I guess, you know, I guess what I would charge Vanessa and Derek and other senior staff, what I'd, what I'd like to see, you know, we, we got into this position because of a pretty poor tax base. And, and, and some of it is, and it, and it dates back for, for several decades. And it's what so many other cities, we're, we're in the same, we're in a very similar position. The, the one kind of comforting thing is that we are in a very similar position to other, to other cities that, that basically counted on new development to kind of backfill aging infrastructure and to pay for previous developments that no longer collect enough property tax to maintain essential systems. So I guess what I'd want to see going forward, I think the, the first rule of thumb whenever you're trying to stop the bleeding is, or fix, is, is stop the bleeding. So I guess what I'd like to hear from, from senior staff, if they're going to come back with a plan so that we can kind of make a better informed decision on which, which scenario sounds good is I'd, I'd like to hear some possibilities about improving our land use and zoning so that we can kind of halt the bleeding and stop creating roads that we can't afford to maintain after the twenty or twenty-five years goes by. I'd also, I think on roads and everything else we do, we need to implement an analysis of all public and private projects so that we know what the property tax will bring in per square foot. And we need to, we need to do that analysis on, on everything because we've got to stop the bleeding. And then the other thing that I, I sort of briefly discussed with, with City Manager Kelly and I kind of peppered our Public Works Director on this before the meeting is, you know, what could we do to retrofit the kind of sprawling, the wide streets? We already know we have several streets that need to go on road diets. And I mean, it's not just Cloverdale Boulevard. We have these streets that were initially designed so that a horse and, a horse, horses pulling a cart could turn around, places like Commercial Street, Main Street. They're just too wide. And they encourage, and I think what we think of it in terms of, and I'll add East Street to that because I saw nearly, I saw what could have been a horrible accident. Somebody driving too fast and was, ran the stop sign at East and First just yesterday. And the guy looked left and right and looked left again and he still didn't think it was, he thought it was a four-way stop, I think, and he still went right through it. So, and it, and some of it is a function of those streets being so wide. But you've also got, yeah, so Commercial and Main and parts of Jefferson and what's the other one over there, just super wide? Jefferson and Washington? We think of it in terms of bikeability and walkability, but why are we laying down the pavement in the first place? Or why are we fixing the pavement in the first place? And, you know, lid may or may not be a solution because it, or it probably comes out to be about the same to maintain over time as asphalt, but it has the added benefit of not being a heat sink and not being adding to stormwater runoff as much. It can sometimes be a stormwater runoff solution, but as our Director of Public Works pointed out to me, he's like, yeah, but that's where the pipes are. So gosh darn it, it's not a, you know, it's not a, oh, that's a better solution. I, I just, I, what I, that's why I'm not an engineer. So I, because I would want to hear back from staff, what are ways that we could, are there ways that we could possibly eliminate some of our asphalt? So we're not continually putting asphalt where we'd actually be better off having bike lanes parking or a, a linear park or a swale or, you know, other, other, you know, kind of lid, kind of lid solutions. So that's what I would want to hear back before we, you know, make, make any decisions on this. We've got to stop the bleeding, so we just have too many streets that are too wide and there's just too much asphalt. I kind of was just like, let's start there and then see how we would pay for it. And one of my hopes, and it may not be very, very realistic, again, it's why I'm not, why I'm not an engineer, is that, you know, we get, we have very limited resources to maintain our streets. We've got our property taxes, we've got our gas, we get our money from our gas tax, which is, you know, a joke, it covers a couple of feet a year. And then we also have, a lot of that can be, you know, some of the, a lot of the repairs can be taken care of out of the sewer fund, which is actually fortunately very solvent. But if we need to retrofit for climate resiliency to respond to like the winter like we just had and to respond to the heat storm we had last summer, this might be a, a good way to kind of find other funding sources to contribute to the maintenance of our roads. But I also think that we have to look very seriously at our development patterns to make sure that we're not building roads that we can't afford to maintain in the long run. So I would like some more information and, and ideas from our, our engineers as well as our finance staff to come up with some creative solutions because, yeah, we're never, get thirty million dollars, we're never going to realistically get there. Is that doable to hear back from staff on?
I, I would say absolutely. I think one of the things that this report does is provide a lot of data. And the, the data will help me, help the council with, with, with staffs make, you know, some really informed decisions. And I think that's what staff's task is here, is to outline a list of projects for your consideration for prioritization in looking at the funding sources for each one of those projects so that we can, you know, really, literally a roadmap for how we are going to make improvements to our local streets and roads system and how we're going to fund them. And we, we do need to be creative to look at strategies. I think the, the cost of meeting the, the, the good standard, you know, even exceeds our, our bonding capacity. So even, even a strategy where we were to ask the taxpayers whether they support a, a complete overhaul of how we pay for roads, i- is very likely infeasible. So there's going to need to be really all the options put on the table. Like you said, Councilmember Bagby, you know, is there opportunities in some instances to possibly decommission or convert some of the pavement to alternative uses? I think we've seen council transition already with certain projects in saying, you know, these roads now where it used to be, they're always going to be public. We're now looking at options where they're going to be privately maintained and, you know, that's, that's again, that's an option for, for council, you know, going forward. Is to look at those kinds of strategies. Now, that doesn't solve the pavement condition issue and that's where both the city engineer and myself have spoken is, is really drilling down. I, I want to kind of point to the, the map and looking at those specific road networks and where does council want to prioritize funding, the available funding? And, you know, just for reference, some, some things that come before you are, is your determination on, on SB one, for example. Every year council prioritizes SB one funds. The, the current project that's identified on the SB one list is Clark Street. And Clark Street is identified as, you know, category four, category five roads. So if we continue to prioritize that, get enough funding and we tackle Clark Street, that's going to handle or address a road segment that has a very poor PCI rating and address the needs of those neighbors and residents who've, you know, long, for a long time expressed concern about the road conditions. So I think we're just going to have to keep tackling it incrementally, but also be creative and look at the alternative solutions. My suggestion is we, we keep this on the Public Works Subcommittee as it, as it was initiated and with, with, with the city engineers' help and the Public Works Director, you know, start to develop that priority list of projects, which again, we know Clark's on there, but start identifying what are the other road sections that we want to tackle and, and how we're going to fund those. Some of that, for instance, is going to come before you or is outlined in this report, for example, doing some, some work on, actually, what are some of the, the roads that rate better? But, you know, that, that will alleviate some of the decline of those roads and won't necessarily improve ones that already are a low rating. But with that said, it can, can help, you know, over in the near term, help us maintain our PCI and incrementally improve it. So those are kind of the strategies and some alternatives that we'll want to be able to line up and present, present to both the Subcommittee and Council. And then it's going to be part of the, the budget process. You know, it, it will get back to what we can afford, but identifying an appropriate budget. And again, through that prioritization, prioritization process, identifying which projects we want to tackle and just again, just keep, keep making that progress. I think that's the only way we're going to tackle a, a significant part of what, you know, the, the roads that are, are in poor, very poor condition.
Would you care if I may? Yeah, I think that if you live on Antonio or Clark Street or the East Lake Street and those areas, you're not happy with necessarily the, the conditions of the roads. And, you know, those folks have been very patient for a long time. And I, I, I just think that, that, that needs to be strongly considered. And I'll just remind city staff that we actually have a plan to take a major, it's a, a plan on a shelf. Or, and it's something that's been considered by council and has been, was, was generally supported by the community. And that was, you know, the downtown area plan and creating a linear park. You know, basically taking the, one of the lanes off of Citrus Fair Boulevard all the way to the train station. So I'm not saying we do that, I'm saying that's an example of something that has already, you know, is, is kind of a plan. It's a plan for a plan on the books, but it would, you know, that would represent a significant reduction in square feet of asphalt that needs to be retained. And that's the kind of creative solution that I'm looking for. Recommendations that would, you know, it, it, that maybe would open up other, they may not be cheaper square foot to square foot, but they would have the, maybe have the advantage of other benefits like bike, like, like reducing traffic, creating bike lanes, maybe creating linear parks, those sorts of things. It's like we, we've got to start getting creative on this. And we also just need to realize the true cost of any development. It's not just the fees that you get upfront. What's the long-term cost? And will this, will that property per square foot be able to maintain over time the ability to generate enough in property taxes to, to maintain essential services, not just streets, but everything else? So I think that this is just one of the deep holes that we find ourselves in and we've got to stop the bleeding and start digging our way out. So thank you for, I, I look forward to the recommendations from staff.
David, what, what is the amount we get from our SB one money? We had talked about it the other day at the Public Works Subcommittee.
I think a rough estimate is between two-hundred and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars annually.
Well, the Clark Street is going to be a process, I guess, if that's the one we identify.
So Vanessa, just real quick, I, I, I'm going to piggyback off of Councilmember Bagby talking. You know, we're, we are a lower-income community, our tax base is lower. Understanding our budget, I know the money is not there, it's not mismanaged. It's just not there to maintain our roads for the last sixty years that we haven't done it. And I understand the idea of the slurry over the, the good roads to maintain. However, my friends that talk to me weekly on Rosewood Drive and Clark and make sure that I understand there's these three-foot potholes in front of their house and they need to buy new tires and their wife ruined their rims and all this stuff. And, you know, the, the hills on Jefferson Street on the north end that, you know, bang your teeth out of your mouth. Those people would argue with me and say, no, maybe you, you don't slurry seal the good roads. Maybe you come fix five-hundred feet of my road. We've been here for sixty, seventy years and no one's touched their roads and they've paid taxes every year. And that's an argument that I completely understand. So in this report, I know you know it very well, when, when you laid out the scenarios, what scenario do we have to reach to where we are truly fixing the, the bad roads, the very poor roads?
Really, I think that was actually scenario one, the unconstrained. The report really focuses on the PCI, the, the pavement condition index and maintaining that. And so, you know, it's, it's kind of a lot of data input and dealing with the data output. But the recommendation is to use lower-cost treatments on fair, possibly even poor roads to keep the PCI high or to get it higher because you don't get very much bang for the buck, if you will, by fixing up the very poor roads. They're very expensive and the resulting pavement condition index for the network doesn't go much higher. But I, I hear what you're saying. I live in West County and the potholes are an issue. I get it, yes.
The average was in the eighties. Is that correct?
The goal of the report is to get a network PCI into the eighties.
Is there any point that funding becomes more available for people like us that have the worst roads in California, in certain areas?
I think it's.
The city, obviously, but we have some pretty bad roads.
Sure. You, you know, the city is pretty tuned in to the various funding mechanisms that are out there. You know, we, we do try, city staff pursues funding opportunities pretty rigorously. It can be tricky and, you know, and it's, it's a kind of a crapshoot. We, you know, you make an application and you don't always get the funding or you get partial funding, you know, but incrementally, I think city staff is doing what we can to pursue funding opportunities.
You know, make sure I'm clear that I'm thankful for everything that our city staff does and all the hard work that they put in and maintaining what we do have, that is nice. We've, we've kept it nice for quite a while. Just knowing that, you know, living in Turman Track, growing up in that area, it, it was, it was bad on your bicycles and now it's bad on your cars and it's only getting worse, so. Any other comments from the? All right, I'll open up to the public. Any hands in the audience?
Thank you Mayor, no one is present in council chamber and no one is raising their hands online.
Thank you. Bring them back to the dais. Any further closing comments? Seeing none?
Thank you for not running from the building, that's to staff.
So thank you very much Vanessa for a great thorough report and I look forward to seeing what we can get out of the Public Works and, and working forward to make this better.
Thank you.
Okay, next, due to an error on the agenda, I would like to ask council if it's okay if we moved up J informational reports to go next to allow our student liaison to report out since her item, standing item got removed on accident from the agenda. So Student Liaison Theresa, could you give us your student liaison report?
So our principal, Dr. Goyle, submitted her resignation to accept a position with North Coast School of Education and will not be returning next year. A total of seventy-two seniors plan to attend the senior trip to Santa Cruz on Friday. Many students are preparing for AP tests and the first one, I believe, is May second. Juniors finished their state testing last week. Prom tickets are available to purchase today through Friday and alter next week. And our prom is on May sixth. Today was the last league track meet in Middletown. Track has their CMC league championship on May sixth and if they do well, they could possibly move on to NCS championships, which is on May thirteenth. Cloverdale Track attended the Viking Classic last Saturday at Montgomery High School, competing against over fifty other schools and most of our students beat their personal record. And tennis has their CMC championships on Friday and that concludes my report.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Comments from anyone? You also have a new superintendent coming on. He's a great person coming from Fortuna and you will also end up with a new Jefferson School principal. That principal just took a, a job back where he came from in the first place and was hoping to move up. And so it's a good move for him and sad to see him go as well. Okay, thank you. And I know that it's the end, it's grading coming out tonight, so if you have to leave, we understand this is going to be a longer meeting, so if you want to leave, thank you for everything you've done today. So whenever you are ready, it's up to you. E consent calendar? Does anyone have any items they would like to pull?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Seeing none? Got a, got a motion? And a second from? Seeing none. Got a motion? And a second from Councilmember Wheeler?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's start with the motion around a second. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Passes 5-0, thank you. F public hearings, F1, consider adoption of a resolution adopting a SEQA EIR addendum for the 23 to 2031 housing element update, and a resolution adopting the 2023 to 2031 housing element update. Kevin, is that you?
I can just introduce, we have our consultant, I see him up there on Zoom. So he's going to give a presentation. I'll just give a really quick background. We're looking for a resolution to adopt the housing element tonight. We had a workshop before the Planning Commission and the City Council previously. On April 4, the City, the Planning Commission did adopt a resolution recommending approval of the housing element. So Luke Lindenbush Bosch is here from Fourleaf, our consultant, has been doing a great job. Luke, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes. Thank you very much, Kevin. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will kick it off by sharing my screen and starting the presentation here. So we're really looking at the culmination right now of about 18 months of work and the housing element update, and are coming to you today following recommendation earlier this month from the Planning Commission to adopt what we hope to be the final draft of the housing element and receive certification from the state of California. So just to go through what we're going to be running through in this presentation, we're just going to give a background of the document. I know there's some new council members, so just want to make sure you're familiar with the different components of the document and all of everything that went into making this a relatively large packet item in front of you tonight. Going into some of the more, some of the items of interest in the housing element itself, the housing strategy, which comprises the goals, policies, and programs, looking at the sites inventory, how the city was fulfilling its arena or its regional housing needs allocation, and then really going into the next and final steps of the project. So first off, looking at the sections of the housing element, with the introduction and summary, this is pretty heavy on data. Really, a lot of what the housing element is formed from is census data that is looking at the city's housing needs and resources, the conditions over the last eight years, and how it can plan for the next eight-year cycle. Really, the meat of the document is in the housing strategy and housing sites. As I mentioned, the housing strategy is goals, policies, and programs. This is the housing element update, and I want to just note that the fifth cycle housing element, which occurred from 2015 to 2023, was really successful in the city of Cloverdale. So this is really putting the update in housing element update. A lot of the goals, policies, and programs that were in place in the prior housing element continued with the sixth cycle housing element, and changes were made in areas that were necessary, as will be detailed in the next slide. The housing sites, this is really based in large part, less on sites, as you would consider them, you know, vacant sites that are developable, that can be used in an inventory. And because of the robust pipeline of planned and approved projects in the city of Cloverdale, the housing sites inventory is largely fulfilled by the development of projects that are in the planning process, and the continued development of accessory dwelling units can be assumed as well. In addition, the technical background report comprises an analysis of housing needs and resources, an analysis of housing constraints, both governmental and non-governmental, and an analysis of fair housing, referred to as affirmatively furthering fair housing or AFFH. So that's really, AFFH is really one of the largest components of the element that has changed in this cycle with, due to new state legislation. So that's in large part why the technical background report is a pretty hefty document. And it's one of a number of state laws which have implicated sort of the nature of the extent of the document that we have to create for you. In addition, there are appendices and supporting materials. This really details a lot of the community engagement that was done, dives into some of the data that was provided in a pre-prepared workbook from ABAGMTC, and really all of the supporting materials that went into developing the front document, the document that will become a chapter of your general plan upon adoption, and the technical background report as well. So I want to take a moment to just really look at community engagement. A community engagement right after affirmatively furthering fair housing and sites inventory is the third most common comment that jurisdictions get when they get comments back on their initial draft from the State Department of Housing and Community Development or HCD. And the city of Cloverdale was pretty unique in the sense that despite the fact that the vast majority of cities and towns and counties get comments on community engagement, we didn't get any comments on the first draft. And that's a really good sign that we did things right. We really reached out to the community with diligent effort, and we did so in a number of ways. That included public workshops such as this one, going back about 18 months to the kickoff, the big policy topics that were brought before the city council, and the draft housing strategy as well. We also did a strong amount of community canvassing in the form of distributing surveys, door-to-door canvassing, tabling at the Cloverdale Citrus Fair all four days last year. And in addition, just making sure that everybody who was involved in the process on an iterative basis was distributed the drafts as they came out via email, and that it was available for the public to review, in addition to engaging stakeholders through direct contact and their participation in regional working groups. So next, looking at some of the program considerations. I'm not going to dive into each of them, because again, this is really a housing element update, and most of your programs are continuing from the fifth cycle housing element. But really, the impetus for the changes in programs that you see from the last time this came before the council are these five categories here. In large part, responding to new housing laws, laws that direct directly to the statute that deals with housing element law itself, and also laws that deal with housing elements in general. And as I'm sure you can imagine over the last eight years, there have been a number of laws that have changed and really changed how housing policy is dealt with in the state of California. So all of that is really considered, in large part in terms of the code changes that need to be done, and any other just amendments to programs that are already existing and working for Cloverdale. In addition, our programs were informed by input from the public and stakeholders, Planning Commission, and City Council. There were a couple of areas where we needed to pivot, and we really listened to everybody from members of the community, to those of you on the dais. In addition, the programs are informed by housing development targets, regional housing needs allocation, really not just looking at the number of units that need to be zoned, but ensuring that units can be zoned and developed at all income levels. You can't just say that, you know, you have the available land to be able to develop the housing. You need to have the programmatic support to demonstrate that it's actually possible and actually possible to make it happen. And lastly, the existing or continuing actions or programs, again, this is an update, and a lot of this is carried over from the fifth cycle. So last, I want to give an overview, or last before I go to the next final steps of the project, just want to go into the housing sites inventory so we can look at the arena and how the city is accommodating it. This was an increase from the city's initial arena, in part due to an annexation-related transfer of some units from the county of Sonoma on the basis of the annexation that is for the Baumgartner Ranch project. So the city's original arena, 278, went up to 335 in total, distributed proportionately across income levels. There's lower income here because you don't have to go into all the income categories when you're demonstrating that housing is developable. Projects sometimes change their affordability levels on the lower end. But really, in terms of making sure that sites are appropriate for affordable housing, there's a number of criteria that are needed to be met that weren't met by any of the sites that we included to the 215 units. So really, when we look at fulfilling the city's arena across all the income categories, we're looking at pipeline projects doing most of the work and getting to full, fully fulfilling the city's arena, when you could consider the combination of pipeline projects and ADUs and JADUs. So overall, the city is really looking at a healthy surplus. We don't want you to get into a territory where you're incurring net loss, which according to state law, really puts the city in an unfavorable position, that your housing element can be rescinded, you pretty much have to go back to the drawing board. So we really wanted to make sure that it was reflective of development trends, it's reflective of the projects that are coming forward in the city, and that this housing element is reflective of what the city is capable of doing as well. So the city has a healthy surplus in terms of the housing sites. Nevertheless, we included some, just to be able to provide some flexibility. And the city also can have a dynamic inventory over the eight-year planning cycle to ensure that it doesn't incur net loss as well. So lastly, I just want to go over a timeline, really looking at where we've been for the past almost year and a half, and what's going to happen next. So assuming the city council adopts, takes a planning commission recommendation, and adopts the final draft housing element and the SEQA addendum that was prepared, we'll be looking at submitting that as soon as tomorrow for a 60-day review from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And at this point, with the extent of comments that we received on the initial draft, we're confident that we're likely to receive certification on the first round, and there might be some really minor back and forth to make sure that it can happen in a timely manner. But we're confident that certification is within reach and that it won't be far down the line either. So we're looking at sometime in the summer for this to be certified by HCD. So with that, I will bring it back to the council, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Luca. Appreciate that. That's a very good presentation with good numbers. Let's go around the council. Any comments?
It's actually, it's, it's just such a great review to read, to read it. But I wonder, this is one of the things that comes up kind of rarely. I wonder if Mr. Thompson would kind of enlighten us on, you know, why this needs to be in place and the kind of funding that it predicated to be, that this is predicated upon to be eligible for. Because it, I think it's underappreciated in a vacuum, you know, does that make sense?
Definitely. It's, a city doesn't technically have to have a certified housing element, but you do, you really need to have that to get a lot of the funding. So a lot of the funding for grants and other projects in town, you know, one of the first boxes, do you have a certified housing element? And this process comes along every seven years, like Luke said. I am happy to say that a majority of this was paid for through two grants that the state provided to us this time, so there was very little money coming out of the general fund. But really, the short answer is for funding is a big part of it, and, you know, you want to have a certified housing element to assist in getting funding for projects.
And I'll just add to that, Kevin. There, with current state housing laws, well, the city has a potential to lose local control if you don't have a certified housing element. You may have heard about the builder's remedy, which essentially nullifies any existing, your general plan zoning laws, and allows developers with pretty much unlimited latitude to propose whatever they want. So having a certified housing element is also of renewed importance for that reason as well.
Go ahead.
Kevin, I'm just kind of curious, what came out of the planning commission meeting? Was there any feedback?
There was probably more feedback on the initial workshop we had, when Luke was asking them about policy directions. We got a lot of comments at that point, and I think a lot of those were incorporated into the draft. So there wasn't a lot of comments at the April 4 meeting, so much as the workshop. But Fourleaf did lay out a bunch of directions that we could go on certain policies, and those are reflected in the current draft.
Thank you, Luca. I have a quick question for you. I was looking at the arena numbers there and the surplus percentages. And we have a very high surplus percentage for the low to moderate incomes. When it came to the higher end, it was only, I think, 59% versus like 105, 121, I think were the two numbers. Is that normal to see the percentage, you know, being so low for the high-end homes? Or is that, or how does that rate, like when you look at Hillsburg, Windsor, Santa Rosa, other cities in our area?
Yeah, most, for the most part, it's easier to have a higher surplus of the market rate above moderate income. So it is a little unusual. There's, you know, pretty substantial pipeline projects that have affordable units, both lower and moderate income. So I think it's reflective of that. And the fact that really, when you look at the scale of these projects, they're taking care of the city's arena pretty easily.
With our tax base, we have a very high number of low income and a very low number of high income, and that's why we have no streets. So it's something to think about for future planning. Well, let's, any other comments? I'll open it up to the public.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing, and no one is present, and no one is raising their hand online.
No hands in the dais. So at that point, I will bring it back to the dais. Does anyone have a motion for the resolution?
I'm happy to move the item. Do we need to read the resolution, Jose?
Yes, if you can, if you refresh your iPads, it is on there. I can pull it up as well.
Which attachment is it? Because I don't remember.
Attachment 1.
1A? No, that's it. See, that's the housing element. I keep going into that one.
Here.
Which one is it? Just tell me which attachment it is.
It's not, it's just right on the box.
If you refresh the iPad.
Oh, good lord. Oh, that's why I can't find them. Like, that's why I'm like, there, which attachment is this? There we go. I'm happy to handle this once I figure it out. Motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution of City of Cloverdale, City Council, adopting a SEQA addendum in connection with the 2023, 2031 housing element and general plan amendment to update the housing element of the general plan for the period of 2023 to 2031 affirmatively further fair housing and comply with the state housing element law.
Do you have a second? Thank you. I have a first and a second. Could we get a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. This is 5-0. Motion passes. Thank you. And thank you, Luke. If you're still in there, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving into new business. G1, ordinance of the city council, the city of Cloverdale, amending section 3.08.030, purchases by city council, competitive bidding, and 3.08.040, purchases of less than $25,000, procedure of the Cloverdale Municipal Code to increase the city manager's purchasing authority.
Mayor, members of the council, I'll go ahead and present this item. Though, the title really describes what the item is doing. It's really increasing the city manager's purchasing authority and the ability to enter into agreements. From currently, right now, the city manager has the authority to approve contracts or make purchases under $25,000. This amendment would increase it to approve contracts or purchases under $50,000. The increase really was, was due to, well, let me back up. And I think that the last $25,000 code amendment, I think it was something like in 2008, several years ago, prices have changed, costs have changed, costs of doing business, just costs for simple projects. That results in smaller contracts having to come to the council. The reason why that's sometimes impactful is because of the delay, waiting for a council meeting, preparing it, bringing it to you, having you approve it, and then having to start a project. This would be more efficient. I'd also like to remind the council, at the end of the day, the council has the budget authority, budget power. So even though the authority, the contracting authority goes up, it still needs to be in the budget to make these purchases. So the council still has the, kind of the authority there to review that. Happy to answer any questions. I think that's, it's simply the increase in authority.
Thank you, Jose. That was very clear. Questions or comments?
The only comment I have is that we had to do this for Smart and at Sonoma Clean Power. So yeah, I mean, it has the credit card, but we still get the statement. So I'm happy to move the item.
Let me open up to the public real quick.
Sure.
If you don't mind.
But when we're ready.
Oh, thank you. All right, open to the public. And I see no hands in the virtual audience?
Correct me.
Thank you. I'll bring it back.
Happy to recommend the ordinance of the city council, the city of Cloverdale, amending sections 3.08.030, purchasing by city council, competitive bidding, and 3.08.040, purchases of less than $25,000, procedure of the Cloverdale Municipal Code to increase the city manager's purchasing authority.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
And just to be clear, do we have to waive the first reading?
Yes, just for the record, this is to waive, waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance by title.
Thank you.
And it's, we don't have it in the title, but just to be clear, we are increasing it from $25,000 to $50,000.
The second has moved?
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. All right, G2, preliminarily approve the engineer's report for fiscal year 2324 for the city of Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District, and set the time and date of the public hearing for zone 1 through 7. So with
this, I will go through the resolutions that I can handle first, if you guys don't mind, and then we'll attack from there. So the first resolution is zone 4, that everyone can take part in. So if anyone has any comments? the first resolution is zone four, that everyone can take part in. So if anyone has any comments? Anything from the public? I see no hands on the virtual or in the audience, so we'll bring it back. Does anyone want to make a motion with the resolution? Councilmember Wheeler, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, a motion to approve.
Resolution by title only. Have to read it?
Resolution of the intent to levy and collect annual assessments, preliminary approve the engineer's report for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four for the city of Cloverdale Landscaping Lighting District, Lighting Assessment District and setting the time and date, public hearing for zones four, five, six, and seven pursuant to landscape lighting.
And the public hearing time and date, we'll do it at eight twenty-eight on this one? Sorry, I forgot. I should have done that earlier, I believe. You have a second? Thank you. Councilmember Bagby for a second?
Member Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter? Mayor Lands?
Aye. Passes five zero. Okay, the next one, we'll do a zone one. Vice Mayor Walter lives in that zone, so I'll ask you to recuse yourself, please. Your comments on zone one? Seeing none, anyone in the public? I see none in the audience or on virtual?
Correct.
Bring it back to the dais. Anyone with a motion with a resolution?
Make a motion. A resolution of intent to levy and collect annual assessments preliminarily, that's a fun word, preliminarily approve the engineer's report for fiscal year twenty-two three, twenty-four for the city of Cloverdale Landscaping Lighting Assessment District and setting the time and date of the public hearing for zone one pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
Aye. And for the record, Vice Mayor is recused. Okay, Vice Mayor, if you don't mind coming back. And Councilmember Wheeler, I'm going to ask you to step out and recuse yourself for zone three, since you live in that district. Sir. Okay, let's see. I'm sorry, that was zone three. Any questions or comments? Public?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Anyone want to make a motion for a resolution?
I'm happy to, uh, recommend the, a resolution of intent to levy and collect annual assessments, preliminarily, I'll get that right by the end, approve the engineer's report for fiscal year twenty-two three, twenty-two, twenty-four for the city of Cloverdale Light, Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District and setting the time and date of the public hearing for zone three pursuant to the landscape and landscaping and lighting act of nineteen seventy-two.
Do you have a second?
Aye, seconded.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Lands?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler recused himself.
Yes, then, Councilmember Wheeler, could you rejoin? Thank you. And for zone two, since I live in zone two, I will be recusing myself, Vice Mayor.
Zone two resolution?
That was zone three. Yes. Now we're on zone two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michael, let the records reflect that the mayor has, uh, removed himself from the dais. Okay, zone two, any questions or comments from the council, from the public? Michael, anything?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. No one is raising their hand at this time, and no one is present in the chamber.
Okay. Would somebody like to offer zone two?
Happy to, Mr. Vice Mayor, recommend a resolution of intent to levy and collect annual assessments, preliminarily approve the engineer's report for fiscal year twenty-two three, twenty-four for the city of Cloverdale Landscaping Lighting Assessment District and setting the time and date of the public hearing for zone two pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of nineteen seventy-two.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Aye, seconded.
Okay, roll call, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
And Mayor Lands recused himself. Motion.
The mayor can come back.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Bagby, for not living in an L and L and being able to handle all of these.
And, and Mayor, just real quick, I just want to acknowledge, uh, the team at Coastline Civil Engineering for serving as the engineer of record, and, uh, for Mr. Paul Wade for attending the, the meeting this night and being, uh, in the audience.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mayor Lands, uh, Mr. Wade is raising his hand at this time.
Please.
Camera and your mic at your pleasure.
Just wanted to say thank you. Good to see you all. That was the shortest presentation on landscape and lighting assessment district in seventeen years.
Agenda makes it a little faster for you. So, uh, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Thank you. We'll see you next year. Okay, we'll move right into subcommittee reports. Finance, admin, and police. Uh, one of our main topics was on the agenda tonight, and our next meeting is scheduled for May first. Planning and sustainability?
And, and Mayor, real quick, uh, we, we polled the subcommittee members, uh, and the subcommittee was in agreeance to canceling the May meeting.
Perfect. It, it, you finalized it. Love it.
I did finalize it. The next meeting will be June fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank, June fifth?
June fifth.
Thank you. So the May first meeting has been canceled due to nothing for the agenda, so June fifth for the finance, admin, and police. Okay, planning and sustainability.
Our next meeting is June twentieth.
Thank you. Public Works?
Our next meeting will be, um, May twenty-third.
Great, thank you. Joint City and School? Next meeting is scheduled for June nineteenth. We had a meeting scheduled, uh, last week that got canceled, and possible special meeting, so keep your eyes open for a new date, just in case, with all the, uh, turnover they're having and the new people coming in, it'd be nice to meet and greet. Homeless Community Advisory Group?
June twelfth.
All right, the next meeting is June twelfth. All right. Any council member reports?
I'd just like to point out, yeah, I did submit my report in writing, but, um, in lieu of the conversations that we had earlier regarding SMART, um, you might want to just, uh, take a quick peek at the, um, the ridership report. Uh, there are pictures, um, and numbers, uh, but, um, yeah, Eddie shared, uh, pictures of the train from Butter and Eggs Day, uh, Butter and Egg Days, and it was body to body in the train cars, and it was packed on the, um, on the platform. I think that, um, we, the last couple of months, we rehired a, the marketing manager who left SMART, went to City of San, I hope I'm getting this right, I think she went to City of Santa Rosa, and she has since been lured back, and the marketing efforts have just been phenomenal. I think it's a combination of great weather and people being sick of being indoors from, um, atmospheric rivers, and ridership has just really gone through the roof. So, um, in that, in my staff report, is just the very, uh, short and dirty, um, um, uh, executive director report. There's also the, um, agenda packet from the last meeting, which has the, um, annual report from last year. And it just, if you're just trying to kind of get up to speed with what has SMART been doing, um, you know, what has SMART been working on, and where are we now today? It's just a really great summary, um, to, to, to just kind of, uh, it, it's a snapshot of, you know, the, 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 you know, it's been operating for, the train's been operating for five years, and pretty much hit all of its goals, and now we will be, um, going to Windsor, like, tomorrow. So, um, and, you know, as I said to Eddie, onward and upward to, uh, Hillsburg and Cloverdale after that. But, yeah, I just, uh, I didn't pull out, it's, it's in the packet, and it's, it, I didn't pull it out as a separate PDF, but I thought that might be of interest to, um, the council members. So enjoy extra reading.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, I, I got to join the, uh, mayor and council members meeting last week with Councilmember Bagby and City Manager Kelly. Uh, Dave Kiff from the, uh, what is he at now? The DHC? Department of Health, something? It's, it's basically the homeless committee. Correct. And Dave Kiff is amazing. He is a czar when it comes to homeless, and he is doing a great job. He gave a great presentation, so if anyone would like to see it, we have access to it. Yes, it is short, condensed version. And at the end of May, uh, they're trying to schedule it for May thirty-first, uh, James Gore is going to be coming up with a lot of different county officials for different pockets and, and projects. And, uh, everywhere from the new radio tower on top of River Road to help every, every emergency personnel, all the way through, uh, the CERT, the Community Emergency Response Team, um, the new pedestrian bridge on First Street, going to do a groundbreaking, Alexander Valley Healthcare, we're going to discuss that and get it on record with different things that they want to do there because they want to have access and offices for county, uh, personnel. Um, CERT is going to be putting out their emergency trailers that they have recently gotten through grants, uh, that will supply power to city blocks at a time during emergencies. Um, they want to talk about Geyser's Road and some of the roads that they are going to be paving around the county around Cloverdale. They want to talk about the River Park and the work that we've been doing in there. And so all day, May thirty-first, we'll be touring around Cloverdale through all the projects that have been in the works that are really coming to a culmination of, of actually happening now. And so he's had to schedule a, a full day, it's the entire day with a lot of different people. So, uh, Vets Hall is part of it with a new generator to power the generator for emergencies, the pool with the new solar system. There's a million things that we've been working on. So, uh, May thirty-first is a big day, and I, uh, look forward to everyone being able to take part and join and, uh, see the good things going on.
Now, is that going to be a, a ride around, or is it going to be a one location?
It is going to be a ride around, absolutely. And so the schedule will come out soon. It, I saw preliminary, it's passed on to his scheduler to actually set the, the final. And when it comes out of, I'm sure it'll go to all of us. Good things, good things for Cloverdale. Any legislative reports, letters of support or opposition, David?
Letter in the packet. We received a request for a letter for.
We're not hearing you on that, on that mic, David.
By Synema Water for, uh, Fish Passage Improvement Project as part of the Potter Valley Project. Uh, Mayor Lands signed the letter and a copy of it's included in your packet.
Thank you. City Manager Report?
Uh, no reports, Mayor, Council.
City Attorney, Jose?
Uh, just a quick comment. I know that, uh, there was a presentation regarding the Russian River Water Forum. Um, just, uh, we're also looking at get, being involved when, when discussion of water rights comes up, and in that group, uh, for Cloverdale, it's absolutely very important because you repeat nineteen fourteen rights as well. So we'll, we'll definitely get involved there.
Thank you, sir.
I'll just add that we've got a, a great water guru at Myers-Nave that we've worked with before, and I, like, our, um, our difficulty is, um, probably his dream job. Um, so we'll be looking, look, it's probably his dream job. Yeah, that's like, he's like, I, I probably, he probably can't wait to get his teeth sunk into this one. So, um, yeah, this will be, uh, this will be a fun one.
Don't, don't, don't ask him about.
Or someone.
Don't ask him about it if you don't have a couple hours to talk.
Right.
Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, um, let you guys know that we're planning a basketball grand opening on May twenty-second at the City Park, Second, Second Street Park. Uh, we're going to have festivities and games and giveaways, and so just to get the word out. It's going to be Saturday. I don't know what time yet, but we'll, we'll have a flyer and information later.
Thank you, sir. Good information there. That's a beautiful job. It's amazing. Okay, council direction on future agenda items?
Most importantly, is the, May twenty-first the same day as the, um, the chamber event?
May twenty-second, sir.
It's the twenty-second.
It's a Saturday.
Oh, great. So it doesn't, okay. Um, yeah, just add our, yeah, our, our chamber and our parks are just taking off. They're just doing a great job. Um, just kind of back on the basketball court, I wa, I, I put it in my council report. I, um, walked over to City Park the other day, and the basket, the guys were there working on the basketball courts. Um, the baseball field looks like, came out of Field of Dreams or something like that. It, it is just, I mean, I don't know if I've ever seen it, probably because, like, there aren't a lot of kids playing on it yet, but, um, it, the season hasn't totally taken off yet, but it just looked amazing. Um, so, yeah, our Parks Department is just, um, doing a great job. And I, I think for, for future agenda items, um, back to pickleball just never ceases to amaze me. Um, but it sounds like there is quite a lot of demand, so maybe we send that, uh, to Public Works for review to see, um, some possible other locations for, for citing courts. Um, we also heard tonight from the cannabis business community, you know, really wanting to have a, a regular structured meeting for, um, with, uh, city staff and/or, uh, council members, and possibly the formation of an ad hoc. And then, um, I just, I, I don't know if this is really necessary. I think we're all on the same page, but just kind of speaking to, um, a legislative, uh, platform for the city, if we're going to have further discussions on that. Uh, I think that the, the Russian River, um, forum, we just kind of have to have a, a clear idea of what we're, we're looking for. And, and they may, you know, to go after grant funding for planning, to go after things, they may need a quick turnaround, so it may be to our advantage to have a pretty clear platform so that David can get a, a letter, um, turned out, turned around very, very quickly, because with items like this, a lot of times, uh, a lot, uh, many, many times, um, they're on a, a tight, uh, schedule. So it might be to our benefit to just discuss that a little bit, have a very clear, uh, platform.
Councilmember? So that kind of covered the future agenda items that I would have had. You got the cannabis one on there. I think that's a good idea to discuss of creating something or, or putting on something, however you want to set it up, David.
Can I just add, add one thing? Um, the pickleball, could that come back on the Public Works Subcommittee? I think we had just removed it, but I think it's time to put it back on.
But staff certainly, uh, will put, uh, pickleball back on the Public Works Subcommittee. Um, I, I want to coordinate with City Attorney on the guidelines for forming an ad hoc, and maybe bring that back. Your meeting, your, uh, we canceled tonight to, uh, council, canceled the first meeting in May, so we can bring that back, uh, second meeting, consideration. Uh, if in the meantime, you have any recommendations that you'd like to share with me about who, who may, has the time and wants to sit on that ad hoc, uh, please do. Um, I think with regard to the legislative platform, uh, my recommendation would refer that to finance, admin, and police. Uh, we can, we can have a draft, I think, for the, for the June meeting for consideration, and we can bring that forward to council.
Does anyone else have any future agenda items they would like to discuss?
I'll just kind of reiterate from earlier tonight. I'm open to ideas regarding streets, and, um, and I think, I think it was pretty clear in the discussion, but I just want to make sure that doesn't, um, gets, gets skipped over in the wash, since we are skipping a, a council meeting. Um, yeah, we need to come up with a pretty viable, um, financial plan, and I think it needs to, and I guess I brought, I, I brought it up, and I was pretty specific because I think that we have kind of maybe traditionally just said, oh, it needs to get paved, we'll just put it on the plan. And I, if we can come up with some creative ideas about, um, maybe, you know, retrofitting or addressing the streets that we do have, and then being very clear that we don't dig ourselves a, a, you know, a further hole with further development. Um, I just want to make sure that, that that gets discussed and brought back with recommendations, and also something that we discuss, um, during the budget process.
Which Subcommittee does it say?
Just going to ask, which Subcommittee do you recommend? It could hit all.
I was going to say Dealer's Choice, maybe, uh, City Manager.
Public Works or Finance, because we know, we know numbers now, too, so. Knowing the numbers, it might be better.
Yeah, pieces of it are probably going to hit all the subcommittees at some point, but I'll, I leave it in the hands of the City Manager to see the best starting point. Um, you know, uh, our Public Works Director might have some ideas. Um, Suzie might, might have some, our Finance Director might have some ideas. Um, and so I think, yeah, maybe that will come out of a meeting with senior staff as to, um, the, the best approach to start.
Please. You know, I think it's really. A, a great idea, um, you know, how do we get to funding to pave the current streets that the city owns? But I think going forward, we need to adopt a policy that, um, and David, you, I know we've talked about this, everybody's talked about it, the, the, um, uh, uh, Facilities District, uh, when new development comes on board, um, you know, before the individual homes are sold, that the developer, uh, signs an agreement, and there's a special levy on that, on those particular parcels, and.
Well, and actually, just kind of in that vein, just.
Well, and actually, just kind of in that vein, it's, okay, do we send it to finance, admin, and police, or do we send it to, uh, planning and sustainability? I just sent an article that was on Public CEO to Kevin and David, and said, you know, in regards to, um, uh, climate resiliency legislative, or, and, and funding, and how you, you know, which is, and it, and I think that one of the article kind of, well, it, it kind of raises more questions than it answers, but it's like, oh, which, which mechanism is right for you? And I think the answer is, um, in, depending on the circumstances, or depending on the area. And that's why I'm really interested in proceeding with a, a nuanced approach. I mean, we're a city that has new developments, we have, we're a city that has subdivisions from the sixties, where we don't collect enough property tax to, you know, take care of our, our legacy subdivisions, and we're a city that dates back to, you know, the eighteen-seventies. So, it's, that's, that's, that's complicated. That, that, that's a lot, and it's, um, different conditions in each neighborhood. So I think, yeah, that, that's what I'm interested in, is, is a nuanced approach, um, on, based on the street and the area, so that everybody, every kid, um, gets a little piece of the pie, at least. You know, at least that's something that, that, that we work toward.